Seven o'clock, we'll call the meeting to order. Clerk Slater, please call the roll. Trustee Rizzi.
Present.
Trustee Nordhook.
Here.
Supervisor Lesprance.
Here.
Treasurer Corstange.
Here.
Trustee Nord Dyke.
Present.
Trustee Shipley.
Present.
And Clerk Slater, present. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in the highest.
Before we approve tonight's agenda as presented, we received two last-minute requests from community members or organizations that require permits for outdoor gatherings that are both happening here in September. Neither one are controversial, but we wanted to get these on the agenda tonight so that they don't have any issues with moving forward for their gatherings. The board received these, or the trustees received these in the afternoon. I apologize, I think staff received them shortly before that. But the first would be, which the trustees all have in front of them, partial Thorncrest Drive road closure for a block party, and it would also include an outdoor gathering permit. The resolution needs to include the permit. That would be adding that to the end to become item 056-2025. Does everyone see that in front of them? And then the second one that came in would be for a fundraiser for Brody B's Cafe, which is an ADA, but this year they're having at the event in the township over at AK Rick's. And so that would be a special event liquor license and outdoor gathering permit. That would be added as amended to be 057-2025. Both at the end of tonight's agenda items. Does anyone have any questions or discussion or motions to amend and add both these items to tonight's agenda?
Make a motion to add these items as presented.
Support.
It's a motion by Clerk Slater, supported by trustee Rizzi, to add to addition, to approve the agenda with the addition of items 056-2025 and 057-2025, both for permits for gatherings that are happening in September. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Having no presentations, now is the time for public comments on anything on tonight's agenda. So that would be closing the roads for the Forest Hills Central Parade, also choosing the annual Township Auditor, adoption of the 2026 Capital Improvements Plan. We call it the CIP, which was presented earlier, but tonight would be for its adoption. And then the two outdoor gathering permits. One is on Thorncrest Drive and the other would be at AK Rick's. So anyone wishing to comment on those items, please state your name and address for record-keeping and approach the podium there. Afterwards, we'll see if anyone's virtually wanting to comment. Not real hot topics, so. Is there approval for tonight's consent agenda?
Shipley makes motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
It's a motion by trustee Shipley, supported by trustee Nordhook, to approve the consent agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Financial actions, specifically invoices scheduled to be paid tomorrow on September 11th. Is there a motion or discussion? Motion to approve tonight's financial actions?
Support.
It's a motion by Treasurer Corstange, supported by trustee Shipley, to approve tonight's financial actions. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Having no unfinished business, first item of new business, 053-2025. Consider approval of resolution of Forest Hills Central Parade road closure. We're without Manager Smith and we're not going to stick Finest Director Nanturini with presenting this, so the board's just going to have to make a go of it. Discussions or questions about the Forest Hills Parade closure? I just.
I would.
I was going to say.
No.
It's an annual event we approve every year, supporting the community. It's a huge event.
It is. I'm a little disappointed that they made it smaller and changed the route, but you know, we'll see if the new route works, so. With that, I'd make a motion to approve the road closure.
That's a motion by trustee Rizzi, supported by Treasurer Corstange. And because this is a resolution, we'll need to do a goal fall. So Clerk Slater? Trustee Nord Dyke?
Yes.
Trustee Nord Hook?
Yes.
Trustee Rizzi?
Yes.
Treasurer Corstange?
Yes.
Trustee Shipley?
Yes.
Clerk Slater, yes. Supervisor Lesprance? Yes. Motion carried. Next item, 054-2025. Consider approval of appointment of Township Auditor. For this, we appreciate Director Nanturini being here. Thank you.
And I appreciate the board being here. Thank you. Before you is a request for board action for the appointment of a Township Auditor. As the supervisor so eloquently recapped, we last went out to bid for a Township Auditor about 10 years ago. Our current auditors do a fine job. They are proficient at auditing townships of this size. And unfortunately, after 10 years, actually after five to six years, best practice is we should go out and look for a new auditor, just so we don't get too chummy with our auditors and they don't get too chummy back. So looking for a new auditor introduces the opportunity for new sets of eyes, new questions, new reviews of old policies. And I do have to admit, in the first year with the new auditor, it's a whole lot of extra work for staff and the auditors. The audit firm has to create files, has to create the structure. They put in many, many hours that they will recoup over the life of the audit. They'll probably lose money or break even on this first year, especially because the audit firm that staff is recommending and the Personnel and Finance Committee should say is recommending is Siegfried Crandall. They are a good-sized audit firm. They perform audits for four townships that are located in Kent County. They came in with a very aggressive bid, but not so aggressive that I don't believe that they don't understand the work that they're bidding on. So with that long ramble, I would recommend that the board appoint Siegfried Crandall as your auditors for the next three years with the possibility of two one-year extensions.
And that was the low bidder of how many?
The RFP was sent out to eight firms and one firm immediately responded back, that is Plant Moran, that they would not be submitting an audit bid because they would prefer to stay in the roster of consultants and accountants, because accountants can't audit their own work.
And we.
So we couldn't. There you go. We couldn't use Plant for both.
Discussion?
Since they're local and they seem to have experience in municipal auditing, I make a motion that we appoint and approve the Siegfried Crandall for the next three years with a one-year addition.
I support, but I do want to go back to discussion.
I think this is incredibly prudent. I want to thank our current auditor. They've been good and I'm really happy with the choice of Siegfried Crandall. I'm aware of them and they've done quite a few municipalities across our state, so great choice.
My own question is, three years just seems. I feel, I believe, and I could be wrong, because I think we talked about this a couple years ago, our previous audit firm had a five-year contract, so just three years, is that, is that a normal length, Lorna?
Anywhere between three and five. And this has the initial three with the possibility of the two one-year extension, so that's pretty typical.
Okay.
Especially, you know what I have to say? People do business with people they like. And if Siegfried, for whatever reason, isn't a great fit with the township, we could have a quicker out, never saying that their work would be anything other than.
But it's both, it's good on both.
There you go.
I just want to make sure, just wondering.
I just wanted some clarification. I think you said that we sent eight RFPs out?
Yes.
And one, one reply was, you won't get anything from us. Did the other seven respond?
They are, they are in the memo.
Okay.
This on the bid table.
I didn't count all of them.
Yes, there's, there's seven.
Apparently I just pulled off.
And Lauren, I think you didn't mention this, but you reached out to each of them directly to encourage them and remind them, which I think increased the odds that we would actually get responses.
I did, because I believe before the meeting, we, the word finance and party was closely linked in a sentence. And after I sent out the RFP, I had a couple really lousy nights of worrying that, what if I threw a party and no one showed up? So after sending out the RFP, I followed up and reached out to each one of these firms individually, had conversations with probably four or five of them. So I found it was helpful.
Any further discussion?
Did anybody support Shipley's motion?
I didn't. So it's a motion by trustee Shipley, supported by Treasurer Corstange, to approve, excuse me, to approve the agreement with Siegfried Crandall as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next, 055-2025. Consider adoption of 2026 through 2031 Capital Improvement Plan. Lorna?
Thank you Supervisor. Before you is a request to approve the plan that the board reviewed, was it two weeks ago now, in a work session? Out of that work session, there was a great discussion on the projects and the process. We, the board uncovered one typo that was taken care of in a chart and also one word was updated. Other than that, though, things look good to go with the board's approval.
I'll make a motion to adopt the attached 2026 through 2031 Capital Improvement Plan.
I know, I have some comments.
Well, let's get us, see if anyone wants to support.
Oh, also, sure.
Before we. Discussion?
Okay, now my turn, all right. I think this capital improvement plan is a shining star because it doesn't increase taxes upon the residents of the township or the businesses of the township, yet it fixes a lot of the long-lasting concerns. Planned improvement on fire apparatus, planned improvement on roads, utilities. So with that, I'm very pleased with how our work session turned out last week, two weeks ago. So my recommendation or my support remains.
Lorna, was there any request from any of the department heads that we weren't able to accommodate because of the budget?
Not at all.
Good, good work. So it was a motion by Treasurer Corstange, supported by trustee Shipley, to approve the capital improve, excuse me, to approve the CIP as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carried. Item 056-2025, that would be the new item that was added for the partial Thorncrest Drive road closure for a block party. This came from a resident. The party will be Saturday, September 20th, and it would close off in front of three homes around 7517 Thorncrest Drive. Three houses are, would be having the party in front of them, but it's not a cul-de-sac, so the houses on either side of the person requesting would still be able to come and go. No opposition from any of the residents about this one, and the township had the same, or approved the same request last year and received no complaints after that block party. So motion, discussion, and also thank you for your flexibility in adding this. Oh, do we have the resident with the request here? No?
I like these types of events. It's at a time where I don't think it's going to interfere, and clearly we didn't have complaints from last year, I see in the report here, so. And reference to case 0562025 for the road closure on Thorncrest, I would move to approve that.
Support.
Additional discussion? It's a motion by trustee Rizzi, supported by trustee Shipley, and that would be, again, the partial Thorncrest Drive road closure for block party and also the outdoor gathering permit. With that, Clerk Slater, please call the roll. Trustee Shipley?
Yes.
Treasurer Corstange?
Yes.
Trustee Rizzi?
Yes.
Trustee Nordhook?
Yes.
Trustee Nord Dyke?
Yes.
Clerk Slater? Yes. Supervisor Lesprance? Yes. Motion carried. Next, new item, 057-2025, and that would be a request for a special event liquor license and outdoor gathering permit. This one would be for Brody B's Cafe, a fundraiser that will be held at AK Rick's. And let's see what the date is.
September 25.
September 25. We were going to have Omar here tonight, but I don't think he made it. But they had a bunch of limitations or concessions about containing the alcohol to a certain place, only in the rear. Doesn't seem to be any issues, but again, discussion, motion?
I make a motion to approve the one-day request for the outdoor activities at AK Rick's.
And the liquor license.
And the liquor license. And that would be item number 057-2025.
Support. A motion by trustee Shipley, supported by Treasurer Corstange, to approve the additional item 057-2025, approving a special event liquor license and outdoor gathering permit for the fundraiser being held at AK Rick's on September 25th. With that, Clerk Slater, please call the roll. Trustee Nordhook?
Yes.
Treasurer Corstange?
Yes.
Trustee Shipley?
Yes.
Trustee Nord Dyke?
Yes.
Trustee Rizzi?
Yes.
Clerk Slater, yes. Supervisor Lesprance? Yes. Motion carried. That concludes the actionable items by the board this evening. Having no discussion, now is the time for public comments about anything, whether it's on tonight's agenda or not. Please state your name and address for record-keeping and limit your time to fifteen minutes for the fairness of everybody in the township. Jevan Solkma, welcome.
Hello, Scott Van Solkma. Sorry, I never get it. Don't try to miss a chance to speak in a meeting. First, I'd like to have a little moment of silence for Charlie Kirk. Political disc, oh, sorry. Political discourse has no part in this country. We may not like what everyone says or stands for, but they should not be assassinated for it. Regarding that, I have a question. I did get the Cascade Connection today. Hunting permits need to be in by September 11th, that's tomorrow. So there's not a whole lot of notice for that. Also, why is it just for antlerless deer? Granted, I know obviously the does, that's who make the babies for the fawns, but the bucks are the ones that obviously do that, and I don't know what, how promiscuous deer are, but I see a lot of them in my, in my place where I live, right in the village there, so. Also, as I brought up before in the past, regarding attendance for people on boards, specifically the pathways and parkways committee meetings. I went to the last one at the fire station and there were three members that were not there. I looked up the minutes, those same three members were not at the last meeting. Since there's only six meetings, they missed a third of them. What's the point of them being on there? Obviously, I come here quite a bit, I'm pretty proactive, I'd like to get on some type of a board if possible, I've applied. So, and I would show up if I were on a board. So is there a rule that people are supposed to show up for them? And if not, there should be. And also, I did see also in here in the Cascade Connection regarding the zoning ordinance, that it's just going to be in the next few weeks. I know it was standing room only, and actually some people left at the fire station for the first initial reading of the planning commission with that, but I was just curious when that may happen with here. I know obviously it is, it is a big to-do and that you guys have a lot more to talk about, I'm assuming, but you know, I know you guys did work through it with some work sessions and everything, but just that's basically what I'd like to see, obviously. And I did also go on quite a bit of the bike paths. Obviously, the new ones that had been redone are looking in good shapes or in good shape, but some of the others that have still been neglected are obviously pretty bad and still need to be addressed. And obviously, that's part of the capital improvement plan. And obviously, you know where I stand regarding P Street, obviously still needing work either for the road or obviously for at least that section of pathway to prevent the erosion and everything that happens there. Thank you.
Thank you. Krebs, welcome.
Thank you. Dorothy Krebs, 1980 Deerfield Court. I talked to manager, or I emailed Manager Smith, but I wanted to make you guys aware that on Labor Day, sometime between 3:30 and 4:30 probably, I was at the dog park and the, the parking next to the big dog park area was full, so I parked over by the gazebo. But another lady that I had been talking to at the park that had arrived before me, when she went to go get in her car at 4:30, she found that her window had been smashed and her purse had been stolen in broad daylight and none of us heard it. And we surmised it was one of those devices that you can buy and keep in your car in case you're in any accident, you're trapped in it, you can break the window and get out. So that would explain why we didn't, nobody heard anything. But my concern is that this is the third person I know from the dog park who has had their car broken in two. One was over when the, when it was crowded by the soccer field to the south of the dog park. I don't know about the other woman, but I know that she made a comment that, yeah, she doesn't bring her purse here, or she locks it in the trunk or whatever, because her car was broken in two. It's my understanding that we have some cameras, but they are up in trees, so when the leaves are in the trees, they can't record anything. And when the leaves aren't in the trees, people can see them and damage them. So it's just.
Where did that come from? I just, it was just.
I'm sorry?
Your understanding, where, I just wasn't aware of that. Where did you hear that from?
The other lady?
No, the cameras. The cameras.
Oh, the cameras. It was one of the people in the dog park, so maybe she didn't, doesn't know what she's talking about, because I never saw any cameras ever. I didn't know we had any. But she said that they were up in the trees, but she might know she's a regular. So, but yeah, but it's something that we might want to consider because things are happening in broad daylight. Jade did let me know that when I emailed him, he said, yeah, they do get the reports, but that's as long as somebody made a report, which I'm guessing these three ladies all did. And it's been, one of them was a couple of years ago, so, and I don't know the other one, but it's just something we probably need to keep an eye on because it's happening in broad daylight and that's concerning.
Thank you.
Hi, it's a pleasure to come before this, I guess, buddy. But I'm at Broad Schultz, 2562 Orange Court, Southeast. I had a little concern the other day and Dan from Facilities handled it quickly. However, it brought up another concern. My concern was, I was walking in front of the stone house and they had done the, mowed the yard and it was all blown on the sidewalk. And I called him, are you going to clean that up? And he said, oh, it's already being done. I didn't understand, they had another crew come in behind it, you're like an assembly line, which is good. So while I'm talking to him, looking at the stone house, I said, what about the generac, generator there? He said, what generator? There's no generator there. I said, well, if you're standing in front of the house and you look to your right, it's right there. Now, why would I be concerned about the generator? Well, there's a couple of reasons. Number one, I've owned two or three of them, because I have one in my house now, probably don't need it, probably was a waste of 8200 bucks, but whatever, it's there, I'm happy with it. It needs service. And if you don't know you have it, but the more important thing that this brings up is, how can you buy something, take it off the tax roll, space, pay $620,000, whatever it is, and you don't do an inventory list? And if you did do an inventory list, why wasn't it passed to everybody who has an interest in it? Speaking of that, what happened to the old chairs here? Does anybody know? Do we keep track of what we, I'm sure we do, because this is a well-run township. I know I come up here only to complain once every six months, but overall, it's well-run, but it's well-run because you've got a large tax base, okay? Let's be honest there.
We had a large tax base for a long time and it was really poorly run, so.
I know, but that's why they could get away with it.
Yeah.
It's exactly why they could get away. But my question is, how do you do things like this? You don't have an inventory list? How many, how many chairs were in there? And Ted, and I believe that was a man's name, he said something to me that struck my heart when I walked by there before he died a couple of years. I always walk my granddaughters down there, you know? And he just, I didn't know who he was, but he owned the house, I found out. He says, you are so lucky, you know, to have grandchildren and be able to get out with them whenever you can. And it was, it was kind of striking. And I agree about Charlie Kirk getting shot today. And my heart is sad for that, and I can say that with all sincerity, regardless of your political views, we live in a country where we have to talk to each other. But if you could, oh, one other thing. The leaves that you put back in that fire station over there, where you can drop them off? Hey, if you're an old person, you can't, you can't put them in there because it's too far up. Now, there's nothing to preclude you. You have good machinery, you could drop them down low and let the people come around back. I know that it's a little wet down there and I'm out of time, but you could do it. And you'd make a lot of the older people happy, because I'm not old enough, I'm not young enough to get three of them to have me empty their car, okay? And climb up those steps. Have you ever done it?
No. I've done it multiple times. But that's, sorry, that's why we have the tag option too, for you to do the leaves in there.
But it would be so simple to do. You've got the equipment to do it. Like that somebody could get answers to some of the questions about inventory?
Having no manager tonight? Board member comments. Trustee Shipley?
I got to stand up and thank you guys for coming. I see a lot of familiar faces, I see some new faces. I don't have a lot of answers for you, Charlie, tonight, but we'll try and get that resolved and get you some answers. You see, we have a scout back here working on government merit badge probably. That's a good thing. We need good future leaders in the government as well as other places. So thanks, everybody, for coming tonight. As you know, the board's working on several issues, including looking at the zoning ordinances. We're doing the best we can focusing on existing residents and businesses with controlled growth and expansion and come to the next meeting as well. And if you have a chance to come to any of the special workshops, which are open to the public, please do so.
Trustee Nordic?
It's great to see a full room. Thank you so much for coming. Civic engagement is so important in what we do and any feedback is always appreciated. Thank you.
Trustee Rizzi?
I'd like to thank everyone here tonight, and I'd like to apologize for the discord on our discussions on the zoning the last several meetings. Some of our discussions have gotten pretty heated. And all of us want Cascade to be a great place. Believe it or not, most of the time, we agree and see eye to eye on the issues as a board. I'm hopeful that in time, things will move forward and a clear. uh things will move forward in a clear, concise way that our residents uh support. And um I appreciate your feedback, and I hear what you say. Thank you.
Thanks for coming and your patience. Uh, you have a little stick in the spokes on the uh on the zoning right now, but we're working through it. We're trying to find a a way through where everybody can be happy, so it's coming.
Clerk Slater.
No comments.
Treasurer Corstange.
Yeah, I have a comment, and it might not be completely appropriate, but my comment is on the two no votes for the CIP tonight. I think that it's extremely frustrating that we hold public works sessions that the public are allowed to come and listen to, that are posted publicly, that we talk about the CIP out loud, publicly, for all of the residents to understand and to hear what our concerns are, what our questions are, why we would vote no for something like that, and again, why what our concerns would be. And to have two trustees vote no on a CIP, that we had a public work session, that we had no comments, we had no dis no, no objection to leads me and I hope the public to question why they are voting no for something that we held a public work session for you to understand what their concerns would be, and that there was none brought up publicly. And I think that we have done everything we can in the last several years to hold all of our decision-making publicly for the public and the residents to hear what we think and where we're coming from and why we're concerned about certain things, and to continue to do that, but then to have silence at those sessions and to not have certain members to 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 state their reasons or their objections to that is extremely frustrating, then to come to a board meeting and have two members vote no for something that we did bring publicly. It's extremely frustrating, and I I hope that the public is concerned with this, because I do think there's some conversations going on behind the scenes that are not being done public, and and I hope you guys are concerned. That's my only thing. That's why we come here, that's why we hold work sessions for the public to stand up and speak and to come here and to express your concerns and our concerns publicly. Some of them are ugly. We talk about the the zoning, those work sessions are ugly. It's because we are very passionate about certain things, and I'm extremely passionate about the finances of our township and holding this information publicly, so that's my only comment. Thanks, Supervisor.
Um the CIP, the capital improvements plan? We're not all gonna agree on everything, that's why there's seven of us, and obviously trustees can vote however however they like. Um, it's just a little disappointing in the process because it seems like it's just political posturing, which, again, we're not gonna agree, and people can vote no for whatever the reason they want, but I feel bad for staff with this kind of posturing, because we met with all the department heads, or excuse me, staff met with all the department heads, the manager, our finance director worked extremely hard, and then gave this entire board ample time, ample information, not only to review it, but also to ask questions, so there was just a lot of opportunity and and having spoke spoken with staff, no concerns were expressed, so to be quiet, if you have a concern that would lead you to vote no, and also make note that's when you should do your job as a trustee and address it with the staff and give the township an opportunity to correct it, and that was plenty of time when you had the CIP to review at the work session. Tonight, no discussion, so obviously, you can vote however you want, but it just seems like it it's unfair to our hardworking staff who've done a great job, and again, this came out in the newsletter, but since hiring Manager Smith and Finance Director Nensherini within the last two years, we shaved off five hundred thousand dollars of just internal overhead costs, didn't affect services provided, that's half a million dollars. We kept that decrease two years in a row, and then by improving our financial processes, which means recouping funds that are going out, that you have the uh ability to bring back to get reimbursed for, we raised our general fund balance by over a million dollars, so I just want to applaud the finance director, I want to applaud the staff that we've got now, I think you're doing a great job, and I and I don't think you guys should take personally the fact that um that you had two nays with zero explanation, I I don't think it's about, I don't think it's an accurate reflection of the quality of work you're doing, and if we had good reasoning explaining it, then we could address the concerns, but if people just stay quiet and then posture at the end and vote no, there's nothing you can do about it, don't take it personally. With regard to the board, or excuse me, the community comments, I'll do my best, Jade's not here, and I really enjoy punting those over to him, but um but I'll I'll take a shot. Deer hunting, Scott, you're absolutely right. Um, that was a hot topic, what, three, four years ago, huge, you know, taunt, don't hunt, bambi, meat, you're not gonna please everybody, right? We took the route, maybe naively so, of doing the antlers thing. Since that time, and we had Jade come on board, new staff, we actually didn't have anybody get a deer, and the few people that did hunt when we took made it antlerless were like glared at and made uncomfortable by the people walking their dogs. So the issue hasn't been addressed, it needs to be addressed. Thank you for bringing it to our attention, and then um the last couple of issues have been pretty slow in coming out, so I would just say if anyone hears or anyone hears of this and wants to still contact the township about a permit, I don't think it's a problem, I think we just had to put a date in there, but apologies because it doesn't seem that sincere. Nobody really got fair notice, so good identification, totally agree with you, and that's something we can work on. Attendance for committees, parks and paths.
Uh, or any committee.
I know, Scott, but I've also talked to you about this a couple of times. Yep, noted. Um, we do have a lot of people that work hard on the committees and commissions, and and there have been some absences, so appreciate you bringing it to our attention, and also appreciate your willingness to serve.
Well, I'm talking about just any.
Not back and forth, Scott.
But just attend for everybody, so.
Pathways being bad, you're exactly right, we've made a big stride in um maintenance, but just so the public is aware, we are at the end of our pathway millage, we are tapped out. We've got a little bit left for just basic stuff, but I think it expires, what, Lorna, twenty twenty-six?
Yes.
And so that will be up for renewal, but what we also uh are looking into, we don't have a parks millage. Most communities do, Ada does, Kentwood does, um but we have never had one. We have what's called an open space millage, which sounds like that's a park millage, but that's just paying off the money that was borrowed to purchase Burton Park, maybe a little bit of Peace Park, but it's deceiving because you call it open space fund, right? And oh, we've got a, we've got a fund that collects tax dollars to set aside open spaces. No, we don't. So that's also expiring around the same time. What we're looking at internally, and are already on top of it, but with those two coming to an end, looking to do a parks and pathway combination, but again, just so the public public is aware, pathways are overwhelmingly popular. With our new engineer, we did a fantastic job of getting those up to speed, but the township dollars are taxed are tapped out in that right now, nothing's gonna happen, and we encourage you guys to um talk about renewing the millage when it does come up. We need help with that, it's about parks and pathways, milling, and we can talk about it in detail, but um if we want to have the kind of parks and pathways that I think residents really enjoy, we gotta address that, because otherwise Lorna can cut costs all day long, but that stuff takes money. Um, Peace Street gravel again, Scott, we've heard it, get ya? That's a public road, road commission road. If we can do something, and we can maybe address it in the overall village design, but that's a no-win situation too, because you've got that, is that one of the oldest streets in Cascade Township? Little Peace Street, tiny little gravel street to the village, where you've got the cool old houses on either side? There's no way that thing is on the center line, so anything that's a public road, if you want it paved, it's gotta be up to road commission standards. That's like a however many feet, I mean, you've got, we're not touching that, and there's no way, so if we can do something that's maybe a happy medium, but it's gonna stay gravel, and I don't think the neighbors want to see all those huge old oak trees come down just to widen and get the width, just so you've got a little less grab. We, I hear your complaints, and I'm not saying it's an issue, you're also the only one who's ever complained about it. Not that you don't matter, but you're the only one, so we're not gonna make that center, we're not gonna, you know, strip people of their old trees and cut into their yards, because Scott Van Solkma, who's on top of it, and we appreciate it, notices the gravel.
So bring more people.
If you can find them, yeah, I get it, and maybe talk to those two neighbors who would literally lose a bunch of yard and a huge trees, because the road commission's gonna say, yeah, pave it, but when you pave it, it's gonna change the entire landscape of that village spot, so it's kind of a no-win situation or a difficult one to fix. Crime at Rec Park, thank you. Hope Omar Diappa or the Deputy Diappa was aware of it, I don't know, I'll check, and I have never heard, I know that we've talked about cameras, and we may even already have them there. The more you get information that comes from residents, the more you realize that what you hear isn't even true. I I never heard that, I don't think they're in trees, but the big thing would be what we were trying to do was at the entrance to the parks, you at least get the license plates coming in and out. And what Deputy Diappa had said was, um, you get these, they know who they are, it's the same groups, it's generally youth people that come from the city, and it's it goes in trends, but you hit the local parks, Ada, not local, but you know, suburban parks, Ada Township, Cascade Township, Caledonia, that you hit it, and it goes in spurts, so like the the same group of people come out to the town suburbs to do their quick smash and grabs, well, then Cascade Township people probably go into the city to do their stuff, so um they're aware of it, but it's just, we'll do what we can, but again, it's a shit, it's it's not gonna go away, and really vigilance by the township residents is the best thing, so we appreciate you bringing it to our attention. I wish there was an easy fix to it, it's just there isn't. Generator, Lorna, I don't know if there's any, I don't want to put you on the spot. I don't know, we'll we'll look into it.
Dan, questions?
I I can say that it is likely that the crew mowing the grass would be different from the crew maintaining HVAC and generators. So I don't know if there is a a staffing issue or, but I any further than that.
Uh, inventory inside the house was a desk and a couple of chairs, it was empty. They gave us the option of buying stuff, but it really didn't make any sense for what they had in there as an office space, so I'm not sure about the generator, sorry about that. Leaves too, I don't know, I do think that the um option was that you get tags and then they'll do the curb pickup. Um, I think the reason they've done that was the dumpster size, um being able to accommodate all residents, and also, we don't have the the funds, the taxpayer dollars, their capacity to have people there to help assist getting the bags in, so realizing it is an issue for a lot of residents, I think the alternative was doing the 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 tags where they they come to you and pick them up, so I'm not positive.
Because I've talked about this, because I do use the dumpsters and.
But I'll, but we'll look into it, I don't know, I I personally don't use them.
It came out was, okay, we're gonna do dumpsters, but then we're all those that can't make it, but if that's not an adequate option, then maybe we do need to look at other options.
Yeah, I I'll pass along the the concern. So thank you for attending tonight, and we appreciate you being here. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
You are adjourned. Thank you, Lorna.